Welcome to the August 29th School Committee Meeting. I am going to call us to order and read this brief statement. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Pam in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harvard Media recording and we are recording on Zoom. Is there anybody else recording? I don't see anybody in the audience, so I think we're good. All right, so I'm going to move over to item number two, approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on August 7.
Hang on a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments. Is there anyone who would like to pose a question or comment? Nope. Okay, moving on. Item four, Superintendent's Report. So we've got 4.1, Facilities Update, beginning with the beginning of the school year. And I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Adams.
Sure. We shared with you a memo that we jointly created, myself, Katie St. Clair and Ayesha. As we traveled in early August to each of the school buildings, we met with each school principal and worked and outlined some of the updates for facilities that were done in each of the buildings. In a short amount of time, we are very grateful to all of our custodial and maintenance staff who have scrubbed and gotten each building ready for the school year. In addition, the summer provides an opportunity for needed updates and regular maintenance to each of the schools. So there's a lot of work that happens during the summer months. Some updates that, I'll just highlight a few things that are in here so that folks can know what's been happening in the buildings over the summer. All of the buildings have security shades now on the classroom windows, so that these are shades that can be pulled in case of a lockdown or shelter in place. And so we're pretty sure we have all of the classrooms and have asked the principals to identify any other spaces that are not covered by those security shades. It's something that we learned through last year in emergency planning training that we felt was important to do as we learned that that's an important component of ensuring safety during those drills and in case of emergency.
Just on the doors or on the windows?
It's both the doors and the windows, anything coming. Not the windows that might be facing outdoors that have shades, but the spaces.
That was my conclusion.
Yes. There's a lot of inspections that are completed over the summer in all of the buildings, including the fire alarm, the fire extinguisher, wheelchair lifts, elevators, and kitchen hoods. Kitchen equipment underwent regular maintenance. The elementary maintenance staff was also instrumental in delivering reading, new reading materials to all of the classrooms. And there was a lot of boxes and materials, so we're grateful for their support with that. Fireproofing treatment was completed on all the stages, as well as boilers underwent regular maintenance. At Plymouth River, just to highlight, the gaga pit, which I know is extremely important to the young people in elementary, was made accessible. In addition, wood fiber was added to the upper and lower playgrounds. A new sound system has been ordered. That was an FY24 capital project. The completion of the security cameras was also completed. That was also part of the FY24 capital. At South, an oven in the kitchen was replaced. An exhaust fan in the kindergarten wing was replaced. Updates were also made to the HVAC and some rewiring was also begun. And I think that'll continue into the fall a little bit. Cafeteria unit for the cooling system is also going out to bid. You've heard the long lead time for that, but that went out to bid. At the high school, high school's next. The smart boards were all taken down and they were being replaced with view boards. That was part of the capital fund, funding for technology. Two ovens were also replaced in the kitchen and the rigging on the stage was inspected. Ayesha and I were treated to a view of the refractories and the boilers that were replaced and repaired, which would also, should also make heating of the building better and prevent loss of heating during the building more efficient. Thank you. In the middle school, one of the four boilers was replaced using capital funding from last year. The boiler four had also was replaced. The burner in boiler two was also replaced. And the industrial waste tanks for art and science were also pumped in the middle school. At East, the chiller was struck by lightning on July 4 to match the Fourth of July holiday. This was covered under insurance, so that was, maintenance and replacement was done on those. The playground pour and play was removed and replaced with wood chips and rubber mats, which was needed in order to make that playground space safe. Foster just had some updates on maintenance and a playground fence was also installed. There was some painting done as well. And there's been a lot of planning for pickup and drop off to begin the school year in order to facilitate the work being done in the back. At the depot, a new charging station was installed for an electrical car. And there were some repairs completed as well in the building for electrical service. That was, if I remember correctly, in response to the flood that they had, some flooding. Yep. And those repairs were covered by insurance.
Anybody have any questions about those?
Huge thank you and shout out for the hard work Katie St. Clair is doing and everyone, Ayesha doing the finances for it.
Yeah, those look amazing.
We're grateful to the town, who also has supported increased funding for the capital needs of the building. So we're ticking away at all of the needs that the buildings have.
Yeah, the front of the middle school was wonderful with all the flowers.
Teachers did that.
Nice. It'll be nice next year not to see the Foster School maintenance list. There will not have to be any.
Yeah, those flowers were done by the students and I believe the science, a science teacher was involved and got the students engaged. And they're excited to see what happened to the garden over the summer. Can't remember what grade and what project it was, but it was associated with the science curriculum.
Okay, so item 4.2, we've got a personnel update.
Sure. On the personnel update, we gave you a list. This is from the date of August 8 to August 29 of the appointments that have been made. We had four resignations, a pre-K teacher at East, custodian at the middle school, a para educator at the middle school, and KIA assistant. You'll notice on the appointments, we have seven additional KIA staff. Some of these are new and some are replacements. I had shared in my weekly update to you that we have increased our KIA, almost double the program. It's gone, it's been hovering around 160 students. In the past, we're up to 300 or so across four sites. And so she, we're grateful to Jackie Sansoni for the expansion and the support needed to develop the program across the four elementary sites. And she felt, as of last week, that she has enough staff to run the program, so.
And possibly even take people off the weekends, so we wouldn't even have a long weakness this year as well, so.
Great.
You'll also see seven food service staff as a result of resignations and replacements of staff. Across the schools, we had four new teachers at the middle school, a science, a health, an art, and another science teacher. And someone who was previously a long-term sub is now a permanent position, a para educator, and an art teacher who split between the middle school and the high school, and a guidance assistant for the middle school. At PRS, a reading interventionist and a first grade teacher. At, and a Spanish teacher who was previously a long-term sub, who's now a permanent teacher at PRS. At Central Office, we've been able to fill the executive assistant for the Director of Business and Support Services. We've added two speech and language pathologists for the elementary. A Spanish teacher at South. At East, a music teacher. At the high school, a secondary English teacher, long-term sub, and a special education teacher focused on academic testing. At Foster, a reading interventionist, a para educator, and then an elementary teacher who's a long-term sub for the year. As well as at East, a para, two para educators and a pre-K long-term sub that's covering maternity. In open positions, just to give you an update, we have approximately, as of today, about 10 para professionals across all of the schools. We hope to continue to reduce that number before the start of the school year. We are in need of three bus drivers, a van driver, and approximately five custodial facility staff. Those custodial staff, I asked Katie about that today, are due to some injuries, retirements, and a resignation. We have one English teacher in a school nurse position. We hope to have that filled too by the start of the school year.
Any questions?
The, it seems like a lot of food service workers left. Was that anything concerning or was that just a random coincidence?
For the food service professionals, one of the things that we did as well this year with, we've, with the free lunch becoming permanent this year, we were holding on to a lot of substitutes in the past. And some of those hours became permanent as part of the food service program this year because the program has expanded so much in terms of the number, the participation that we have as well. So it's a combination of people leaving as people always.
It's not a concerning number. Okay.
And it's a good reminder that lunch, thanks to the state is free again for students.
Yes, and then just logistically, bus drivers, van driver.
So for that part of it, although we, we have some people, we noticed the signs going up on the buses saying bus drivers needed. Porek is confident that he'll be to get everybody to school safely and back using substitutes and some part-time people that we also have that assist. We have somebody in as part of the maintenance staff who helps, as well as a DPW that also helps us as well. So we rely on those people as part of the plan to get all the kids to school and back.
Thank you. And then, sorry. And then just on the para professionals, if we have 10, we're 10 short. How are we going to cover the, actually maybe Barbara can answer it. But how do we cover the IEP's requirements?
One thing I know that principals do fairly carefully is look also at our special education teachers and their schedules and are able to plug in where we need to provide inclusion supports, use those resources as well. So we use our para professionals, our special educators, to make sure that the individual plans are covered. So that work and that scheduling will be done. Principals are working on it and we hope to get as close as we can to all of the paras that we need in order to cover the IEP, so.
That's an area during our job fair last week, where we've had some successes as well too. So we're looking to continue that as well.
Yeah, it seems like the numbers came down significantly over the past week.
Yep.
As far as the paras.
The, indeed, it's helping us a lot versus school spring. And as well as the job fair helped a little bit too. We hope to do some efforts in the next two weeks to try to get more folks. As school gets started, some folks start to think about, you know, maybe I'll try and help out. So we're trying to do some of those efforts to close that gap.
And one additional area that we had a great success with, a part of the job fair were substitutes. So if push comes to shove, we can always pull that out as well.
What is the best question? What's the backup plan for that English teacher at the middle school?
We have a very strong applicant. We hope just to move through the process, so just hasn't happened yet for different reasons.
Matt.
Just to follow up on the paras. Do you recall, I think the number's pretty similar to where we were last year. So not ideal, obviously, that we're in this position, but it's not necessarily different from where we started the year last year. Is that, is that accurate? I feel, I remember it was like eight to 12 or something.
It's pretty accurate. I belong to, we belong to a listserv of human resource administrators throughout the state. And there's been a couple of, lots of sharing of significant educational needs that staff, districts are having. There are districts with almost 20 to 40 teaching openings that are mid-sized districts, 6,000 to 7,000 students. They're really struggling statewide, not with teachers and educators, as well as support staff. So, and we've heard some of those stories on the news in the last couple of weeks of staffing shortages. So as you can see, we're, you know, we're not, we're still working on it, but we're in, we believe in much better shape than some of the numbers we've seen across the state, so.
Okay. 4.3, beginning of school activities.
I shared with you a schedule of the opening activities. Grateful to Katie Roberts and her organization of all of the meetings that will be occurring. You'll see that we started this week. Many of you were present this, on Monday, as we welcomed our new educators. We had approximately about 20 new teachers there. They continued on Tuesday, today, working together to get ready for the new school year. Our leadership team also spent the day with fire and police reviewing emergency preparedness and emergency response. We're grateful to Ayesha for organizing that and included some run-throughs through scenarios of what-ifs and sort of discussion around planning and planning our drills, our fire drills, our bus evacuation drills, shelter and lockdown for the coming school year. So great discussion and a lot of planning went on to make sure we're prepared. Tomorrow, we'll start with convocation at the high school with our professional staff. And then on Friday, Thursday, sorry, with our support staff, which will include our paras, our bus drivers, our interventionists, and our food service workers. Busy three days, two days, two days, two days ahead. I keep thinking today's Monday, but it's Tuesday.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, so moving over to item five, got 5.1, communications received by the superintendent. Have you received anything?
We, do you want to share about the September 12 date? September 12?
On September 12, we're kicking off a year-long literacy palooza, which, Miller Dubsy has trademarked that name. And so we will be engaging in the community. We're again very excited about our new reading program and want to message to the community just how exciting it is. So on September 12, we joined virtually by some trainers from the inter-reading program. And they'll be sharing out with the community what they can expect from this investment that our community has made.
Great. It's exciting. All right, 5.2, student communications. We don't have anything. 5.3, other communications. Anyone on the committee receive anything? So we don't have anything for item six, unfinished business. So we'll move over to item seven, 7.1, to review and approve the superintendent's goals for the FY23, '24 school year. I'll pass this back over to Dr. Adams. I did, so I didn't see the, so I chatted and we have the update going in. I haven't seen it reflected yet. But it could be my connection is wrong.
Oh, okay. It isn't.
Sorry.
Thank you, Sherry. So in, I provided, oh, it's fast. I provided a memo that gave a lot of description and overview and detail. And so I'm just going to highlight specifically the goals. In the memo, the process, the five-step evaluation process recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's the same process that our staff goes through when they do their evaluation with their supervisor or their principal. And the process starts with self-assessment. So in the memo, I tried to highlight for each of the four standards, the sort of big, big picture summary across the four standards of where we felt, where I felt the district was. And we spent a lot of time last year through planning processes and really documenting what is in place in the district. And so I sort of highlighted sort of big pictures, ideas in the memo sort of to get us started with that self-assessment component. I think a lot of that is based upon the audits and the work that we've already done as the planning processes. So based upon that, I developed four goals to share with you tonight and welcome your feedback on those four goals. I'll work on implementing those goals. And like last year, around January, we'll share an update on my progress towards those goals. And then at the end of the year, share again some artifacts and progress and you complete a summit of evaluation. In the folder, I also placed the MASC's guide for the evaluation of administrators. And there's a new rubric from the state, which I think caused us some confusion last year because I was using old one and then they changed it at some point last year. So I put that also in the folder as well, the new rubric. So I based my goals and the standards that are addressed there on the new rubric from the state. Oops. I'm going to get the hang of this at some point. There we go. Questions about that so far? All right, so goal one was a continuation of last year to focus on the district's continuous improvement and provide leadership around critical areas of improvement. And much of this focus is on the continued implementation of the district's strategic plan. You'll see some of the standards addressed include data-informed decision-making, engagement of the community, communication, and shared vision. There we go. So key actions, implement year two of the strategic plan. We shared last year a professional development plan. So to begin the implementation of the two-year professional development plan, we shared a technology plan to start the implementation of that tech plan, to build upon the equity audit from last spring. And share with you, we hope to come back in a meeting or two to share some goals for this coming year that sort of begin to attempt to address some of the concerns and needs addressed in the equity audit. So we'll be back in a couple of meetings to share some of those goals with you. We also are planning to come back with you in a meeting or two to share with you a year two of a communications plan. Much of that will focus, we've got a lot of feedback on the website, that the website is not, is gigantic, it's hard to find things on there. We've tried to do some tinkering and some updating to that, but we'll share a little bit more in the communication plan. But that seems to be an area of most need, comes across in the surveys we've done of staff. Continue to strengthen the MTSS implementation in grades K through 8. I changed it in the document to reflect K through 12. I think in my original writing of it, up to about two weeks ago, I was like focused on K through 8 and then coming back into the start of the school year, knowing that we need to extend this into the high school as well. So that should actually read K through 12.
Smack, it's inside my head.
Yeah. And so sometimes when you're like reflecting upon it and getting ready and you're like, you wrote it once and then you no go back. And when I went back and looked at it, I'm like, ooh, this should be K through 12. I mean, we talked, we talked a bit about the need to extend into the secondary, middle school. And then I think we've also become aware of the need to continue that work into the high school, so. And really focused too on trying to create opportunities to amplify student voices. One of the things I'm going to commit to doing is a student shadow date at each of the schools in the fall and the winter. I'm hoping to get it. I scheduled it on my calendar, so I'm hoping I can hold that time sacred and try to find some ways to connect with groups of kids at the middle school and high school. So I have some ideas in the works and I'm going to make a full faith effort to try to get those going. I think some of those efforts last year that I had good intentions kind of with the voting for the foster in the fall and the override kind of got smaller, smaller time windows. So I'm going to recommit to that again this school year. Okay, here we go. Did it. Second goal is around supporting hiring, recruitment, and retention in collaboration with Ayesha and Kelly Larkin, our human resource coordinator, really working on the creation of comprehensive systems for hiring. We are working with a retired superintendent, Pam Gould, who is from, she was in Sandwich, as well as she was in charge of human resources in Plymouth, but she was a superintendent, a retired superintendent in Sandwich, and assistant superintendent for human resources in Plymouth, who's going to work with us throughout the year to help us develop our hiring handbooks, our processes, our procedures, put them into place and document them, and really create a system for us and that we, and we train and all of our administrators and our hiring leaders in those processes and have those in place. So we're grateful for her support in that area. We're going to work on revising our hiring of substitutes, putting in some processes and procedures for those, some, looking at doing some training and documenting the training that we provide for substitutes, creating a system that, of training, professional development for paras that's specific to their needs, looking at providing training for our managers, hiring managers on the role of bias in hiring. We belong to a group called the Massachusetts Diversity in Education. We had a partnership with them last year. We jumped in a little too late in order to take advantage of everything they had to offer. Kelly Larkin and I went to a summer retreat and are invigorated to use them as a resource to help us in the hiring process as well as in the recruitment of diverse staff. We were just talking today about collecting data on folks who leave us as well as documenting some data about the onboarding process of new staff and what we could learn from them as well after onboarding staff, what feedback they would give us as well. So we're going to be working on that piece.
Yeah, I just went, I think this was fantastic. Throughout the strategic plan process, we heard that from a lot of staff that this was so sorely needed. So I think it's great. I just, are you going to be conducting, or is somebody going to be conducting exit interviews when people leave the district?
Yep. Yep, we just talked about that. We've been trying to do some, but have to, you know, formalize the process, so. Yep, we just talked about that today. Third, and Barbara's here tonight to share. She's later on the agenda, so I won't steal all of her thunder. But we want to really work closely on creating a comprehensive evaluation of our student services that will really set us up for some short-term and long-term goals for the programs that we have in place. One particular area that Barbara and I have talked a lot about is the importance of creating trust with our families of student, of special needs. And we've brainstormed some things and we now need to put them down on paper as that, we need much more transparency in our programs as well as opportunities for dialogue with our families so that we can hear from them. They can give us feedback. And there can be multiple places where they're providing feedback throughout the process, at the school level and at the district level, so that we can be in the same continuous cycle of improvement with our student services and special ed. So we really want to use Barbara and her knowledge and her expertise this year to help us create some short-term and long-term goals as well as ensure a smooth transition with her, help her build our capacity. with her, help her build our capacity across all of us, I think, with, as well as the finance piece, as well as the curriculum and instruction piece, and myself as well as the leader of the district, and use her expertise to continue to strengthen the services we offer for our students with special needs. And I know she's going to share more from her perspective shortly. And our goal is to have Barbara come back several times throughout the year, like we've done with other plans, so that we can continue in this dialogue around student services. Goal Four is to continue to work with the new superintendent induction program to continue to hone in my skills, to be a superintendent and develop, continue to improve, work upon my strengths, and also work upon my needs. You'll see that it includes taking advantage of the new induct, new superintendent induction program, meeting with the assigned coach. And then also, and I think this is wise, also some feedback from Ness and Michelle, as I transition from that sort of program that's for new superintendents to seek out and establish relationships with other mentors that can support beyond the two years of the program. So seek other connections, either through other networks and other superintendents who can provide additional mentoring and support, both formal and informal, and what those might look like. So I'm working on investigating those and have some leads of what that might look like, but I just started that kind of, that work.
Is the program been helpful?
Yeah, I think one of the things that's been most helpful is the connection with other superintendents. We were able to visit, and Ayesha went with me on one visit, when we were working and thinking about human resources. We went to one of my colleague's districts and learned from her, she's now superintendent, but used to be a director of human resources, and we learned from her what the district's practices were around human resources. And Ayesha learned a lot and has been using some of that information to build some systems around our use of frontline, Munis, that have been really inspirational. I got to go out and visit Martha's Vineyard and see the schools there. And so, and they, two of my colleagues came here as well and visited the foster. I think that kind of collaboration, I think, has been the most enjoyable, is being able to see what other districts are doing and learn from them, and what are some of their challenges and what are their sort of strengths and how, how they go about addressing some of the needs that we all have in common. That's a great question. Thanks.
I think one of the things about the, including meeting with other mentors too, is I think a little bit to your point about that relationship building is so important, but how do you fit that in all the other work of being a superintendent? And to sort of get best practices from other people, how to meet, engage with students, staff, leadership team, school committee, the community, the municipal side. So I think that would, because we know how important those relationships are, because we did, you know, good work this year, building them, you know, and getting us all moving towards our two overrides. So, yeah. Matt?
Thanks. So a couple of questions and comments. Maybe I'll start from the last one. So maybe this like has to be in there, this Goal Four. My, I think last year was Goal Three. My observation as an evaluator of that was like, it was kind of, it's really important for you to do. Like, I didn't, I kind of like, okay. When I was thinking of like how we're evaluating the job that Margaret was doing, that was like, one, I didn't feel like I had a very good idea of, you know, okay, yes, you went to meetings, how important were those meetings? And two, when I think of it in the context of the other things, like, you know, Goal One, there's so much in there that's incredibly important for, so I think it's an important goal for you. Maybe it has to be there for the school committee, but like my observation is, it's just hard for us to evaluate that, and I'm not sure it is as important as some of the other things. So just a comment. I'm really excited to see Goal Three. I have a question on the program evaluation, but maybe I'll hold that for the later agenda item, but I, I think that's a much-needed goal, so I'm really excited to see that. For Goal Two, I, this, it makes sense to me. I'm struggling a little bit with what's the main driver for, so getting more procedures is important and getting data around it makes more sense, but there's like a lot in there. And I'm wondering if, if you've identified a major area of improvement. Is it, we're not retaining people, we're not retaining certain people, we're not growing people well, we're not getting the right applicants, we're not hiring the right people, we're not hiring diverse enough people? Again, I think it's all of that to some degree, but it would be useful. If all of those are major areas, then absolutely makes sense to me that, again, this is a goal at the same level as Goal One. If it's, we want to improve procedures because we always want to do that, continuous improvement is important, but we feel pretty good about all of those underlying things that I just laid out. I guess I would question, is this as important? So curious your thoughts on that. And then my final point, I guess, or question, I guess, point. For the strategic plan, I can't even remember when's the last time we went through it, it's probably in June. We had talked about it's a living, breathing document, makes sense. Do we think there are going to be any minor changes so that, we talked about there's going to be probably not at the, I forget what we call it, pillar level? Probably not that.
It's a good word. Yeah.
Thank you. Probably not at that level, but some of the underlying activities, have we had any time to look at that and, you know, do we think there'll be changes there? Sorry.
So you have a lot of questions, so make, if I don't answer all of them, please tell me so.
Yep.
I tried to make notes. For Goal Four, I would say that's a professional practice goal. We sort of, when we work with staff, we do a student learning goal and professional practice goal. This, this is sort of a professional practice goal around improving my practice in order to be a leader. The two outcomes for that, there are fairly specific outcomes. Year one was the entry plan and then the entry finding report.
Yep.
So that was the specific outcomes. In year two, it really, the, the outcome is the development of a strategic plan.
Okay.
For me, and in HINGO, I came in at a different place in that when I came in, the strategic plan was being developed, and I was able to participate really heavily in that and was able to gather information and be a part of the development of those goals. So instead, I've taken the stance of trying to make that strategic plan, instead of saying, let's revise it.
Yep.
Instead, trying to make it a real livable document and really take action and not be a document that sat on the shelves.
Yep.
And I'm hopeful through the process we did last year that you saw that we really did intend, not that we were able to meet all of those objectives, and we've had some conversations about which objectives we haven't made any progress on, and how do we jump-start some of those things, because there are some of those that we need to jump-start and we haven't, you haven't attempted to do anything towards, so.
Okay, that's super helpful.
Yeah.
I didn't catch that in the benchmarks, so that makes a lot of sense.
So the Goal Two, year two of the NISTAP program, we really focus for the group as a whole around the implementation, redesign, and development of strategic plan. We just happen to be in a different place.
Yep. Okay, makes a ton of sense.
Goal Two, it's sort of asking like, what's the why of Goal Two?
Yeah.
And it has multiple pieces to it. The hiring landscape has changed. It used to be, we would have very few applicants for math and science teachers in special education, very key areas. But now even you put in, out an English, a posting for an English teacher, and you would get, in the past, you'd get forty, fifty applicants. That's not the case anymore. It's a very, there are fewer and fewer young people going into education. There was a colleague who would all, who told me, he went, he goes every year to Bridgewater State, speaks to secondary teachers at Bridgewater State, usually have a room of thirty educators. And when he went last year, there were five. So the hiring landscape has changed and we need to be much more creative and much more, is the right word, nimble, and changing and adapting to the landscape, because it's changing just so rapidly. So, you know, we learned like, Indeed was a great place to get more applicants for support staff, but who knows what the platform will be a year from now. And so we need to be much more flexible and try multiple things in order to recruit, pre-cruit and retain staff. So I think that's one why.
Yep.
The second why would be, in order to recruit diverse staff, one of the things we learned from last year from the state, and I know from previous work with the state and their work around recruitment of diverse staff, is you got to have your act together with human resources, with personnel, with the interviewing practices. We need to be, have common interviewing practices, common sets of questions that we've thought about thoughtfully around bias. What are the best practices in hiring that allow us to really get the best candidates for positions? What are the best questions or performance tasks? And there are a set of best practices in hiring that we can adopt and keep, once we adopt them, once we create a system, we can continually look at that system and update it for what are your best changing practices. So I think that putting that down on paper and working, not that good things aren't happening, but it's bringing everybody into one, some of those best practices around hiring. Because the most important thing we do is hiring our teachers who are in front of our students every day.
Makes a ton of sense. My only observation based on that is, fine to keep it as-is, and retention and professional development and improving processes around training is also important, but, you know, what you just talked about was much more about, which I know is in here, so I guess I would just, fine to keep it as-is, but it sounds to me like the main focus is around hiring and recruitment. And that's borne out by the bullet points, but, and less about retention. And again, I'm not trying to say you aren't incredibly, you feel retention's incredibly important, but.
The recruitment and onboarding process that staff go through support retention.
Yep.
So if that process is a positive one, I think the, the new teacher and the mentoring that we do, I find that training of our paraprofessionals and our substitutes, when provided, provides them, sets them better up, better for success, that allows them to feel successful really quickly, and then be able to better meet the needs of their students and our, our students overall, and then allows for retention. So I see that training piece really connected to retention as well.
Okay, that makes a ton of sense.
And I just add to that, that, well, the retention and some of the policies and procedures for, for people who are already here may not be in here, they are in the strategic plan, so we'll still have to do it. It's just, it may not be, we won't necessarily be evaluating you on that directly.
And it is in the strategic plan, that piece around recruitment and retention. And again, we know that in order to do that, we've got to have our processes and procedures and best practices in place for hiring. You had another question on that, and I forgot.
The question was around the strategic plan, but that kind of got answered.
Okay.
In the number four, the goal number four. So thank you.
Thank you. But that's helpful feedback.
Yeah, and I think just for some history, when we had brought on the Human Resource Director, it had been, or that position in Human Resources, it had been a long time, a position that we were looking for, for a long time to fill, but you sort of, you know, what are your priorities, right? Like an HR person or another teacher or another paras or whatever it is. But it, it started becoming evident that we needed someone because there were so many issues that people were having that were sort of leading into job satisfaction, right? Like if you don't, if your payroll is messed up, or if you are, you know, constantly having to, you know, your substitutes aren't trained effectively, that was really what we were starting to realize, that it was starting to impact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In our world, it's, you know, we can get rid of G and A.
Exactly.
Those functions, what do they actually do? You know, they're not revenue generating, but they're important, they're also important.
Exactly.
They may not be, you know.
And I think in a district this size too, it's a pretty standard position average, because I mean, it's a big, we have a lot of employees.
That's evolving too, because as she works through some of the processes, you realize she could be doing more and more and more and more gets added on, so, so I think that's going to continue to evolve, yeah.
I think we're also working really hard at Central Office to not have silos and to be really connected. So it's not human resources, it's, human resources is connected to payroll, is connected to each school building, is connected to student services and the need, so, and it's connected to the professional development that folks need. So we're working towards a more integrated system and so that people know and understand the roles of each other and can get what they need and support from each other. So we're working really hard towards that as well.
Sounds like it ties a lot into efficiencies of the district, and then that in the long run helps with the budget and everything else, education.
Any more questions? I did finally get a connection and I saw that it was updated, that one.
Oh.
Yeah. I thought so. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so are we ready to move forward with approving for goals for the year? Sure. Okay. I will make a motion to approve Dr. Adams' superintendent goals for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Okay, seven point two, to receive an update on the goals for student services. So as Dr. Adams had mentioned, started to mention that Dr. Cataldo will give us an update, and I know that you've been meeting, you've been busy meeting with all the different principals and coming up with recommendations and hearing that you're meeting with parents and CPAC, so I'm sure you have a lot to present from that.
Yes, well, I do, by running sneakers into my office, so I can tell you, I'm running more than I realized, especially now that the elevator's down. So I'm just going to take one step back too and tell you today that I was with the new teachers and the energy in the room was phenomenal. And I have a lot of places that I can measure it against, having had a lot of first days, but the energy of our teachers were just so great today. And I even had a teacher there who had been a student of mine when I was in Cohasset, so it was very nice, it was like coming home. But I just want to say that they've done a fabulous job with the hiring. I wasn't part of all of that, but I just feel, you should hear as an outsider who's had that experience, they've done really well in how they've chosen people to be together as a cohort, so.
That's good feedback. Thank you.
So, thank you. So I, I assume you have this.
Yes.
In front of you, thank you. I have spent a lot of time this summer with who's been here, going into the schools, meeting with principals, meeting with assistant principals. I know that Dr. Adams and I did go to each school and talk with principals about special education in their school and gather data and look at where the strengths are and where we can strengthen things. And that's essential. I have also met with the CPAC, and I was anxious to meet with them once more before summer ended, but they're like, we have to have summer end, and I went, okay, that's fine. So we'll be getting back together now that school's opening, but just so you know, I really don't want that to be a relationship that doesn't happen. That's a very important relationship, and they've already, in our meetings, have given me some very constructive information that I agree with has to change. And as a result of talking with parents and talking with teachers and talking with administrators and certainly hearing what people have been saying, this is where all of this came from. And I'm sure halfway through the year, I'll come up with more things, but we're going to start with this and hopefully stick with this. So it's divided into four sections, as you can see, and the first one, which I think is really essential, is supporting a program review. We really feel you have a lot of programs here, you have a lot of threads go K through high school. I have to admit that on our website, we're not doing a really great job at being able to find them. I had to have somebody get me to them, so that says to me right now that we need more transparency. But nonetheless, we felt that it was really important to be taking a look at our program, so we were looking for an outside evaluator who could come in with a really objective eye and say, you know, this is really working, don't change it. And this could use a little bit of assistance, let's change this, or this model is, was great in the seventies, but we can't use it in 2023, that kind of thing. So we have located somebody that's able to do that, two people will be coming in, we're working with some well-known folks who've been special education directors, two folks coming in that I think combined years of service total, almost ninety years. So I'm hoping that they can see something, even as an outsider coming in, I can see some things, but now I'm in the middle of it. I really do need to have folks who are coming in fresh to take a look, who can really put all their energies in it. At the same time, I want to At the same time, I want to be looking at the the framework and the operation of all the programs. What drives our programs? What makes them work? What makes it successful for students? What do our teachers need for support in order to make sure that they're able to do their jobs appropriately? I want to look at the curriculum and materials. Obviously, that's that's key to what we do. We want to make sure that we're giving the students what they need in order to support them appropriately. And be able to have that growth in development and successfully move forward. And hopefully move more into the general education setting for those students who are in programs. And not have students come out as much either. We had a long discussion today about yours, mine and ours. These are all our students. And it's really essential that we remember that every single day and how we can change their lives. And be the change, which is what I really emphasize to the teachers. We're looking at those K to 12 vertical threads and how everything aligns. And how it changes from elementary to secondary, all the way to high school. Post-high school, we have students who are part of our programs that are 18 to 22 in that transition phase. How are we meeting their needs to make sure as they come through, they'll have that continued growth? And if our roadmap is saying we're not quite there, we have to make an adjustment, no doubt about it. And then ensure that all that information about the programming is on the district's website and really easy and accessible. And as our CPAC had discussed with me, post our entrance and exit criteria. So that will also happen in the course of all of this. And I really think some of the things that are being offered are well worth listening to for sure. Strengthening communication. I really want to look at relationships. And yes, I have been asking folks to come in. I've asked parents who might be questioning things to please meet with me virtually or in person. I've made myself available. And we have been doing that. And I have been working with teachers and I've been working with even DCF, just talking to all the different constituents. Who make up part of our district and collaborate with the principals. And I have a really, what I feel is really solid relationship with our principals now that they will call me when they have questions. And that's, this is really a very short period of time. I've only been here seven weeks. So that we're calling in and we are collaborating on where we have questions and what we can do to resolve questions. And I think that's important. But we also want to look at how we increase opportunity for student work, both inside and outside the general education classroom. What are we doing to foster that? So students feel good and are willing to accept the challenges. Look at the working language that has to be in a meeting. I know that this is not characteristic of just Hingham. This is characteristic of a lot of places where parents come in and they're part of the team. And you have 15 people or 16 people sitting at the table and parents and guardians represent one or two of those seats. And then the rest is the school district and people start talking in the language they know for education. But that's not the parents' language. And so what I want to make sure we foster an environment where we're all using the same language that we understand. Or if we're not, that those folks who don't know what we're talking about are willing to say, hey, I don't get it. Can you please change it and put it in terms that we can all understand? To me, that's essential. And having been a parent on both sides of the table. It really has come home to me what has to happen. And we'll be looking at that. I'll be doing a lot of walkthroughs. I've already told my teachers that I'll be visiting them. I'll be reiterating that tomorrow when we meet together as a group for the first time. And one of the things I plan to do is create a Monday message for faculty. So each Monday, I'll be sending out a message to the special education faculty, sort of what's coming up this week. Or if there's a training available through DESI. Or a notation about the upcoming changes to the IEP. Or even something constructive about how we run our meetings or how we do our paperwork and timelines that need to be effective in our paperwork. And things like that. So I'm going to take advantage. It's not going to be a diatribe of three to five pages of information. It's just a quick few paragraphs that we can share with everybody and make sure they can pick up some kernels of information to help them. As well as spending time working with everybody, particularly at the central office, all the way down into the schools. About the learning in the schools and how we can expand on that work. And we might find, you know, we're here today looking at what we have in place. But in June, Dr. Adams might be back saying, hey, we're going to do this next year. And I think that's really important as a result of all of these things. In terms of the third area, I want to be working on collaborating with the Hingham families and the community. I think that being a part of CPAC, I've always prided myself on being a part of CPAC, attending those monthly meetings. Attending, having meetings with them off camera so that when they have their their board meetings, contributing to the meetings. Or at least being able to sit and listen and update them what's happening, being a part of that. I also talked to Dr. Adams about, aside from the CPAC meetings, not every parent can step out at night. Even if it's virtual, not every parent can get to their computer at night. And even if you think you're going to sit in front of your computer, something happens, your children need you. And suddenly the screen has to go off, the sound has to go off and you miss the meeting. It's just reality. We get it. We're all parents and we understand. So one of the things I had suggested is maybe having some daytime meetings with our special education parents, inviting them in the morning for a coffee. Have them come. Have some pre-planned topics that we can talk about and also take some time for some questions. I might not know the answers, but I can come back to the next meeting with them or speak to parents off camera. Or off the line meeting there and try to answer their their questions. And I think I've done those before and they're very successful because everybody can change their schedules. And each month, a different group of people will often show up, but changing the day, changing the time. So people's schedules and a lot more people working remotely, I'm discovering, so they are more available. But still, having some morning meetings or afternoon meetings that will allow parents to come out and meet. And not always have it in the evening when your children are home and you really need your attention. And then looking at various communication means to disseminate the information that might not be covered in CPAC. And I'm not quite sure what that will look like yet, but I'm working on that. And that's obviously a work in progress. And then the last very, very big thing is to organize the training program for the rollout of the new IEP. The Individualized Education Plan that will be forthcoming in September of 2024. Last year, a number of districts piloted the new IEP. This fall and September, approximately 40 districts are actually rolling it out. That means there's about 290 that aren't. And we're among that group, strength in numbers. So next fall, that will be a requirement. We can't get to August and say we're not ready. So we will be, a group of us will be attending the first Train the Trainer training in October. That's their first time that DESI is bringing us together. And then from there, we will be working on what has to happen with the changes. The our SIMS, our student information database has to be changed in accordance. So that we can carry that new IEP and so forth. And then DESI will continue to instruct us on what we need to do. And I think it can be really intimidating because we haven't changed it in so many years. So we want to make sure everybody feels totally prepared come September. And we'll be doing, we're going to plan out what those meetings have to look like. I am sure my Monday messages will be filled of little trivia they need to be aware of. And then we obviously have to establish a calendar, which I can't do until we actually go to the training and understand what's involved. And know how many pieces there are and how many moving parts. So once we get to that meeting in October, we'll be coming to the game later, obviously. Because a lot of things will be in place, but we will figure it out because it's necessity. It's not a want, it's a need. So that is it in a nutshell. And I know it, there'll be questions. But I just wanted to give you an idea of some of the things that have happened and what we're looking at and what has crossed my desk. And hopefully what we can do to continue to move the district forward.
This is a lot for the last seven weeks that you've been here. So I appreciate you coming together.
I drink a lot of coffee.
Sneakers and coffee. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. This is great. And thank you for doing the outside evaluation too. We've knew this for so many years. So. I guess I have two questions. Who's who's doing it?
We we employed Bob, Robert, Dr. Robert McCarty.
Okay.
And then he is working, Sandra Enzola is one of the people who will be coming.
Okay.
Oh my gosh, I can't remember.
There's another person.
Yeah. The former director for the Wayland Public Schools, who was the director for many, 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 many years. And I will get her name for you.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. And then when when will their findings be available?
We haven't picked a date yet because we haven't picked a date for them to start. But they'll be starting out, obviously, after we open the new year. Once we have a date, I'm happy to share that with you, or at least an approximation.
Okay.
We were hoping early spring.
Early spring, depending on how the process goes. We've talked also about making sure that it includes various stakeholders. When we spoke to them, we talked about surveys and focus groups. And so there'll be plenty of places where we can hear from multiple groups and give feedback. So. So it looks like a comprehensive process.
Absolutely. I'm sure at least one of you will be speaking with them.
And then I had a question about, so under the first thread. One of the benchmarks was establish a K through 12 vertical threads for programs, including curriculum alignment and student profile. Can you just talk a little bit more about what that is?
Sure. You have a lot of program, and thank you for asking the question. You have a lot of programs and you do technically have threads. And what I mean by that is you will have a RISE program that begins in the elementary that travels through the high school. But what I want to make sure is that they're all connected to each other and that they build upon each other. So that when the student reaches high school, what does that program look like from the point when it was in elementary school? We don't want the kids, the students to stagnate at all as they're going through development. We want to make sure it continues to climb. So we have a number of programs. Obviously, we have language-based, we have RISE, we have the C O C. I just want to make sure that each of those programs are really robust all the way through.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then the last question is, so we'll be hiring a new Director of Student Services this year for the following year. I don't see a goal in there about kind of the transition. I don't know if it needs to be in there, but what was the?
I will leave that to Dr. Adams because I know that she will be doing the hiring. But and and obviously, no matter who is hired, I will be sure to sit with them. But Dr. Adams, I'm sure will have what she would like to have is the transition.
One of the things we've talked a lot about is using Barbara's expertise and sharing it. So that she's working and developing the capacity of our principals. Our school, our school psychologists, our team chairs to lead the program are the three of us as well. So that we gather all her wealth and knowledge and so that if, when she exits, all of that still exists and can be passed on. So we've spoken a lot about building people's capacity to continue to develop and strengthen the special education, student services. After a year. And no matter who that person is, that we also can support that person in the transition. Because we've also grown in our understanding and our ability to both address the strengths and the needs of the program moving forward. So.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
She could have had another goal here around capacity building of of school and district leaders. And both leaders and teacher leaders to strengthen the program. So I'm sure she'll start that work and we'll do as much as we can in a year. But I'm confident we'll have more work to continue into subsequent years.
So I, that's a, thank you for that question. And that, because I had the same thought. I mean, I do, it doesn't have to go in here, but I do think that is an incredibly important goal, not the hiring of of the person. But that transition setting up, you know, sort of every day that you're engaging, you know, all this is. Sorry, let me first say, this is like a breath of fresh air, reading this. Like I am really, really excited for what you've laid out. But I think, not but, and I think throughout your work, you know, having that in mind, which you will, of course. But like, I see that as a really important goal, that the relationships you're building with the community, with teachers, with administration. Is important for you to develop that relationship, certainly to understand it, but also to start to build that trust. And be able to transition that to the next person. So I would like wholly support that being some, some sort of goal along with the building capacity. So that's just one comment. I also had a question on the timing of the review. And I think it's important, you talked about this, Dr. Adams, balancing comprehensiveness with speed. So I would just, I would just keep that in mind, like I, because I feel like comprehensive is really important. Getting input is important, very important. But I also think having it done early enough where you can weigh in on it, where we can weigh in on it. And then it can be set up for the new person is also important. My guess is if they did it in, I don't know what their capacity is, but you know, in five months versus eight months, it'd probably be 99% is good. So just, you know, my own observation, but I'm really excited that we're doing that. Two other quick comments. One comment is just the collaboration with Hingham Families is kind of, I'm so glad to hear you've had. And I've heard this from the community already, that you're having these conversations and that they've been. Parents have really appreciated it. CPAC has appreciated it. Parents have appreciated that. You know, that's really important. And so I know you're going to get incredibly, you're already incredibly busy. You're going to get even more busy as the school year starts. So, but I'm just, I'm thrilled to see that on here. I think that will, along with some of these other things that you have here. That probably single, will be the single most important thing in rebuilding trust or in building greater trust. Probably a better way to put it. And the final thought is not from a goal perspective. I also met with the CPAC leads earlier this month. And I think figuring out how we most efficiently leverage the subcommittee and CPAC and your time. Not that we don't do it, but it's like, we're all, we all want to work together clearly. Everyone has their own responsibility clearly, but we want to make sure that we're not. Having the same conversation multiple times or having different, the same conversation with not all the stakeholders there. So I don't have an answer right now, but it's one of the things I want to talk to you about is like, what's the, and you know, Tim and Ally as well, from a subcommittee perspective. Like what's the right way to structure that where we're getting the best use out of our time to drive the most value going forward?
Sure. And I I appreciate that because everybody's time is so valuable. So my my first thing would be is let's all get on a virtual call or in person, most likely virtual. And let's all decide together how to make this work and set the schedule then and stick to the schedule unless there is a dire emergency. We set that meeting, we show up at that meeting, coffee and all. Starbucks will never go out of business as long as I'm here.
And just to share, I had shared with Dr. Adams and Dr. Cataldo yesterday at the new teacher orientation. I I know you said that she's going to be extremely busy with some of the parents come school time starting. I know that she's already my parents because I received and just a heartfelt message about how well received she was with one parent. Who was looking to bring her child back into the district. And she was really appreciative. She went out of her way to let me know that she was really appreciative of your efforts and you sitting down and talking to her. So.
I represent the district. As far as I'm concerned, we have to do what's right by children.
Thank you. Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the bolstering the connection between regular ed and special ed. I know Katie and I have talked about this a lot and sort of looking at the rollout of the reading program. And a lot of the big sort of academic regular ed events that are happening this year, all special education students are regular ed students as well. But I think the voices of, you know, students with dyslexia, students with reading disabilities are especially important in this rollout. And so I didn't know about your your role in of sort of, there's lots of stuff going on in regular ed right now. I'm wondering about special ed's connection to that. That's a really poorly worded question, but I think you get my drift.
With all the moving parts, how are we going to make the move in the right direction together?
And and in addition, make people realize that like regular ed and special ed really are the same academic program. And your child, if they receive special ed certification services, primarily receives regular education services. And all of this is of interest.
So one of the things I'll share is that Katie and I meet weekly. So that's in those meetings that we're able to talk about these things and talk about what our experiences are and how we can use our shared experiences to benefit students. And so, well, I can't give you any details right now. I can say that we are sitting and we're looking at the programs. And also how it will fit when it's in the classroom. There's no retrofitting here. It's fitting. So when the programs are rolled out, we have to see where it works for students who might be on IEPs or have other kinds of needs. And they're going to be students who aren't on IEPs, who are going to have all kinds of needs. And we have to understand under that universal design, we have to work together to make it approachable and for the students. So we'll be looking at that as it rolls out. And because it's new, you don't exactly know what it's all going to look like. But we will be there together, shoulder to shoulder and talking about it and discussing when there are gaps or difficulties. What we can do to resolve it. And that has to be done with the principals as well, because the principals are in the building all the time. And they're really the face of their buildings. And we want to make sure that it's all inclusive and that everybody's on the same page together.
And even goes, I mean, down to the individual teachers.
Absolutely. But we do want to make sure the principals are aware of what's happening in their building. So they can work constructively with their teachers when we're not in the buildings, which is just about every day. I mean, we don't spend all day in the buildings.
Thank you.
I'd like to add just how grateful I've been to have a partner in Barbara. We've been collaborating so well already. Today, as Barbara mentioned, we had our new teacher orientation. Barbara did a terrific job with the presentation to new teachers. And we did collaborate together on the slides to integrate some of the UDL practices that we've been emphasizing into year one. So in addition to those weekly meetings.
So in addition to those weekly meetings, there have been a whole lot of kind of back and forth in each, in each other's offices, really collaborating on some of the projects that we have going on. So I look forward to continuing that.
Awesome. Thank you.
This is a really great team. I just, I have to just say it. I know nobody asked for my opinion, but I'm giving it to you. This is a really great team. I mean, we get up in the morning, we come, there is laughter, there was serious conversation, but there was laughter. And people really want to strive to work together. And I so appreciate having that kind of team, filled with energy, filled with positivity, filled with the opportunity of what's coming down the pipe.
Just wanted to add from the teacher's end, meeting with the new staff before lunch, at lunch today, also got great reviews of like the workshop that you said, like best one they've seen in years.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, that's great.
Great.
Also great for the teacher.
Hi, thank you. Yeah.
No, that is, that is great to hear. And I was seeing that what I particularly appreciated, it's reading in here, was collaborating with the principals to understand the current relationships, because I think they're, we have great programming, I think, in place. But there, I think sometimes there's a disconnect between the teaching staff about who's providing, where am I, who do I talk to? What do I need? So really appreciate seeing that in here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, moving on to, wait, actually, do we have to approve anything here? Nope, we don't. Sorry. Okay. So moving on to 7.3, to review the leadership and governance standard for comprehensive program review and act as appropriate, as appropriate. So as we mentioned at our last meeting, Hangman was chosen by Desi for the comprehensive program review for the district accountability review. So I had sent to the committee the sections that we're responsible for. And we basically, we had a due date of August 31st, but Dr. Adams just mentioned that we got an extension. So what I did was I took all of your feedback and I compiled it into one document. I took the ratings and just averaged them since we have to complete just one form and submit one form. So I, I put that into the packet. I know it was today, so I apologize. It was later than I had. It was my fault. I was late getting it in, so sorry. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at that. If you have any questions or additional feedback that we should include in there. And if not, we can move forward and vote on it so that we can pass it over to the administration and they can add to it for, for whatever is due on the 15th.
The only thing I would add, and I forgot to put it in my submission, so I apologize. A number of us have done professional development through MASC and other places. So I think that's worth noting in there.
Okay.
My only note was we are very hard graders on ourselves.
You got my comments? Yes, I did. Yes. Yeah. And they're reflected in there. Yeah, I just, I highlighted them. Yep. All right. So other than that addition for Carrie, is there anything else? Okay. Do you want to vote on that? Make a motion with Carrie's adjustment? I can make that and send it over.
Yeah. Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the leadership and governance standard program review answer summary that we've put together with the change recommended by Carrie.
One second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, I'll make that edit, Dr. Adams, and I'll send that over to you. Okay, 7.4, to discuss grants and donations and act as appropriate. So Dr. Adams or Ayesha?
Yes. So for this one here, we received an award of a grant from, for the high school in terms of the gym and the speaker system for the gym. So we just wanted to get your approval on that equipment. And also the, the grant also includes as well the, the effort to install the equipment as well, too. So just to get your approval on that as well, please.
Any questions? Carrie?
One. And so this is very generous of you to say that. So we appreciate that. Is there any, any outstanding costs for, as far as maintenance of the system that we'll have to worry about in the budget going forward?
I'm, I'm sure that there will be going forward, maintenance of it in terms of that. But I think currently, it's just, it'll be new equipment that will replace what we currently have right now. So hopefully for there, it wouldn't be any maintenance for a little while in terms of that equipment.
Okay. And it'd be like maintaining any of that.
Exactly. Yes, exactly.
Very generous.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Right.
So this, is there a sound system in there now? So this is replacing the one? And does it improve the overall sound quality of announcements and things? Also, as well as people doing performances and whatnot?
Right, within the, within the gym.
Okay. That's, I think incredibly helpful, because I think I also heard feedback about it being very hard to hear when students in the high school age are in the cafeteria having lunch and it's very loud in there. Yeah. This is great.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yeah. This is amazing.
It is really amazing. It's very generous. All right, I'll make a motion to accept a grant of 20, or accept $20,700 in donations from the Ginaras and Nimpore Kar families to install a new sound system in the Hangman High School gymnasium. The equipment, material and supplies will become the property of Hangman Public Schools. And I hope I pronounced that last name correctly.
Do you have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Okay, so we've got 7.5, to review surplus materials and act as appropriate. I didn't see anything. Okay, got it. All right. So nothing on 7.5. All right, so we're moving over to item eight, Subcommittee and Project Reports and Warrants Signed. Let's start down the line. Matt?
I can't remember if I said this last time. First half meeting of the year is scheduled for September 12th. Maybe I didn't say that last time. So, and then I need to, where we need to set up the first Subcommittee Meeting of the Year for conversation for us, for special education.
We have our first Policies Subcommittee Meeting on January 1st of September.
I've seen how busy all of the people involved in educational programming are. And if I let the dust settle for a couple more weeks at the beginning of the school year, maybe later this month or early October for a meeting. And I just wanted you, since I don't have a committee, I just want to take the time. I saw Katie Sinclair signed on to the meeting, so I just wanted to take the afternoon to publicly thank you because you missed the discussion of all of your hard work earlier in the meeting with the facilities report. So.
Thank you, Katie.
Thanks.
Yeah, so the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee has, we met with Unit B, which is a pair of professionals yesterday. We are meeting with the teachers tomorrow and the Administrative Assistance Unit D on Thursday. And we have a number of meetings scheduled with the Bus Dyers, the Custodians, and then with all of those units as well. So it's going to be a busy. I did have a question on school councils, because they're obviously not meeting yet. But they, they need to meet no later than 40 days after the first day of school. So timing, give the principals a week and then contact them, or what do you think?
I would, the week of the 11th would probably be a good week to.
The week of the 11th? Okay.
Let us get through the first week.
And do you know, you may not, are there any plans for training again this year?
Yes, we set a date.
Oh, great. Okay.
Yes, we set a date.
Okay. Oh, perfect. That's great.
It's around the same time as it was last year.
Okay. That's great.
And they are aware.
Yeah, I found it really helpful this year. So.
Got a lot of positive feedback on that?
Yeah.
I can look up the date and give it to you in a second. October 26th.
Thank you.
And I'll remind you of that date.
Great.
I just have Finance and Cabinet Facility Subcommittee will be meeting this Friday at 8:00 a.m. And there are ones in the back.
Great. Michelle?
Sorry, I'm putting the school council training in my calendar. Just a couple things. Thank you for everyone who could attend the Foster groundbreaking, or sorry, the groundbreaking for the new elementary school to replace Foster School that was held on Friday. It was a little rainy and a little wet, but it was, it was really great. It was such a big moment. Long, long, long overdue and coming. So it's, it's really exciting. And it's amazing to already see the metal structure already going up. So it's, it's really happening. So thanks for folks who could be there. And for those who couldn't, I'm sorry you couldn't make there. And also, once again, to Katie and her fabulous custodial and maintenance team, because they did a great job, just even just setting up for us outside at that last minute because we needed a tent and all the things. Then, and we had a meeting, School Building Committee meeting, but it's canceled. So we'll meet, I think, in a couple of weeks. I'm going to, again, around probably 11th, I'll reach out to Leah Viola at the high school to find out where we stand with the student advisory council elections, because I think the senior, junior and sophomore reps have been done, have been, are on the committee already, but the freshmen don't have their elections, I think, until the end of the, end of the month. And then they'll start regular meetings with them. And then I was actually thinking that I will reach out to Alex about if we want to change the time, just because I just thought of that for the student, that might. It might be great, it might be horrible. So.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'll reach out to him over the, when I get home.
Okay, before we finalize?
Yes.
Okay. All right, got it. Okay.
And I was actually just wondering if Jacqueline, does, because we were thinking about starting our meetings earlier, 6:00 or 6:30?
6:00.
6:00. Is that better for you as attendance? Yes, these meetings. Figured it wouldn't be. All right. So I'll just check in with Alex just to make sure that doesn't interfere with his after-school things.
Good point.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so then as far as, two things I wanted to make note of. We've got the Wellness Advisory Committee, which is required by law. Dr. Viness had done that last year. Dr. Adams is pulling together a new team. And we didn't have a school committee rep last year, but I will step into that role and primarily doing that because when we did have, we had one year of a wellness subcommittee. It was myself, Michelle and Liza on there. And Michelle's got enough going on with salary negotiations. I figured I would step into that role. And then the second thing, we have our workshop, our planning workshop coming up in September or early, no, ended for September, early October.
September 23rd.
Yeah, September 23rd. So if you are planning to meet with your subcommittees over the next few weeks, if you can pull together goals so that we can discuss them at the planning session, that would be great.
Will there be a Zoom option available for the 23rd?
Yes, there will be.
Because I'm going to have to participate via Zoom.
And I think Matt's planning to, are you coming on Zoom on the 23rd as well, the workshop?
No, that I can, I should be able to.
Okay.
18th, I need to Zoom.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah. Any other questions? No? Okay. So item number nine, other items not reasonably known within 48 hours of meeting. Does anybody have anything? No. Before we adjourn, we have a couple of meetings scheduled. It's listed right now as 7 o'clock. We're going to try to see if we can move it to 6 o'clock. We will confirm once we know from the student rep whether that works. One other item that has been scheduled, we scheduled for September 18th. The MASC is going to host a training for us on roles and responsibilities and relationships between the superintendent and the school committee. Since we don't have any new members this year, we thought, Jen actually thought of this great idea to, to just basically refresh all of us on what the roles and responsibilities are of each party. So that was a great suggestion. So thank you. They're going to come in and present that to us before our September 18th meeting. They'll come in at 4:30. And then we've got our planning session Saturday, the 23rd. And that was all that I had before we adjourned. All right. Somebody want to make a motion? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Great. Thank you very much.
To adjourn.